T O B.
Yeah.
B E R over T O B?
Yeah, B E R.
Okay.
My preference.
T O B. Do you like T O B?
No. I'm actually fine. But either one of those I think is fine.
Well, we are, we know that there are many different possibilities. I am kind of looking for some direction so we can get it to the M B A to design something. So if you feel, yeah, now would be the time.
I'm fine with B E R.
B E R, T O B?
B E R.
B E R, I like B E R too. All right, so the logo on our file and then D E R underneath, I think it allows, so Maryland's always at the top, it allows for something down below. I think there we say town.
Twenty-five letters total. So you could go Town of Berlin, Maryland, or we could go to something different.
I would just do Town of Berlin because Maryland's above it, right?
Well, we have to tell them how they want to see it.
But they don't let us change Maryland at the top.
No.
So.
Well, then good, if we have Berlin, we have Town of Berlin.
Yeah, Town of Berlin, Town of Berlin. And then I think that's it, right? And then by consensus, we're still okay with moving that forward, right?
Yeah.
Great job, thank you.
Thanks.
So I did have a question, as I'm sure somebody warned you. Did I understand that the?
This is Jack.
Yeah. So did I understand that the minimum order that was twenty-five?
Yes. So twenty-five application have to be initial submissions. Once, once we roll this out, M B A approves it, then applications will be available downstairs for citizens. But we'll come back with more details of pricing, how the process go. The first step for us is to be okay with the Fondraison program. Second step is to submit the logo and the boarding to the M B A for approval. And then we kind of put everything in detail, so how much and when and how.
And we'll get like a mock design and everything.
We can see.
And then if there's any feedback or tailoring, we can do that as well. Forget that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job. All right, up next for discussion are fire pits and Ryan, our planning director, in our own point.
So at a.
Should have a staff recording everybody's packs, right?
So at a previous council meeting, the question was asked, are fire pits allowed? And do they fall under the outdoor burning article of Town Code? Town Code states that except by special permit from the Director of the Planning and Zoning Department, no outside or open fires or burnings of any kind shall be permitted. So that wording kind of suggests that all outdoor fires, including fire pits, are either not permitted or only allowed with a permit. So planning staff researched a little over twenty municipalities throughout Maryland to see what their regulations were. Out of those other municipalities, forty-three percent of them did not permit fire pits. Thirty-three percent allow fire pits and twenty-four percent allow fire pits with a permit. Those municipalities that did allow the fire pits without a permit, they typically had some sort of restrictions, like size of fire pit, materials to be burned, setbacks on buildings and property lines. So open to discussion if you guys want to talk about it.
Thank you. We appreciate the research and looking into this for us and hopefully clarifying this in our code. So it's open to the council.
Well, I mean, I'll kick us off because I brought it up. So thank you, Ryan, and everyone who got involved with this. The issue, the issue really stemmed for the, what I believed as well to be a little bit of, it wasn't clear. I mean, the code kind of says one thing and then it goes, well, if you get the exception, the county code says it's okay. So, so there was, as I understand, there was a little bit of confusion there. And so we had some residents reach out to me personally about can we, you know, what's going on? So I appreciate, you know, again echoing the mayor digging into this. I do think it's a, it's a good thing to have as a discussion up here. I just, I want to be clear, like I said, I'll kick this off, is, is should the group be okay with fire pits? I would be in favor of some sort of, you know, some sort of guidelines of what to burn, what not to burn, safety information. I see on here as well, size and coordinating with both the Fire Marshal's Office and the Royal Fire Company. And I would strongly recommend that as well. So, okay, well, that was my kickoff.
So, okay, one question here. This originated from a citizen calling you or was an action taken by the police department as a result of a burn, a burning fire?
Yeah. Oh. Yeah, well, they, they reached out to me because they received a citation.
Okay.
So they were, then they went and read it themselves and then they.
Got you.
Okay.
I can say personally that I've had many instances where people would either stop me walking or call or email, and I always pass them along to the police department and the planning department. So I know of multiple times where it's not been a fire pit, right? Like, we're not talking smores in the backyard of your family. We're talking about burning debris.
Right.
So that, I know has existed multiple times. And I think clarifying, I think that setting a set of guidelines that should a family have to contact the planning department every time they want to do smores outside of that? I think there should be a standard size and material. If you are seeking something outside of that norm, then it requires an application with the planning department. But I do think some general guidance would be very helpful.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that this reads now, that could technically include a barbecue grill.
Yeah.
So I mean. I don't think any of us are interested in having people come into planning every Friday going, I'm gonna have hamburgers tonight, you know?
But, well, I wanted to bid twice, but I just want to clarify that I'm not for the burning of big things.
But, but, but if you, if you open it up, we have five thousand residents in Town of Berlin. And thus, there could be five thousand interpretations of what a fire pit is. I think, I think if we're gonna go this way, there are some definitions that have to be established.
I think you're right.
I think you need to establish definitions, but you can also include language, it's not ideal, but you can include language that permits the planning director or current enforcement officer to look at a particular situation and determine if that's a fire pit versus an open burn. You can allow for some.
Well, based on what I understand, the planning director has that discretion now.
Yeah.
By granted, that permit.
Yes, I still think it's a good idea to throw some definitions of things.
Yeah. And to clarify this, well, because it says no outside open fires or, or burnings of any kind. So I think that part, we still need to allow for the except by special permit from the planning director and zoning commission. But, which I don't know what the zoning commission is, but somebody finds them, let me know. But I think the outside open fires part needs to be.
That's just one of those language discrepancies that pops up.
Yeah, fire pits, barbecue grills, very common throughout the United States. They definitely should be allowed as a non-permitted use, that question. But I do agree, you need to put enough definitions on open burning and what a fire pit is.
Yeah, there's definitely a difference between recreational burning and open burn.
Yeah.
So I think the more clear we can be, the better.
Just to clarify, I've never received a complaint for somebody doing smores or families out in that. I have received for open burn, like debris and stuff like that.
Well, I think that's actually how that complaint came about. She was burning in a chimenea. So it's kind of like a fire pit, but, you know.
It's a pre manufactured thing that you could buy at Home Depot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sure in researching these in twenty other municipalities, we weren't the first ever to deal with this. So I'm sure the verbiage could be friendly way borrowed.
We never tried, we never tried reinventing.
No, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
Champion plagiarizing.
Do you get a motion?
No, I think we're just.
No, it's just a discussion. If you wanted to proceed, you want better definition. And then we can, we can work on that and then come back and.
Thank you all so much.
We appreciate it. All right, up next, we have a public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five, and that's amending chapter thirty-two, section two sixty-six, speed camera violations and penalties. Our town attorney, David Gaskell, and chief of police are going to run point. Keep in mind that this is stemming from state law that we have to bring our code in compliance with. So anything you want to add before we open up the public hearing?
Well, again, I, this is not a measure that was at the suggestion of the mayor and council in Berlin. This is something that our state legislature passed that became effective October first. And in order to remain in compliance, our code needs to be amended to reflect what the state's done.
Good, we'll open up the public hearing. So the public hearing's open for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five. Anyone that would like to address the mayor and council may do so at this time. I thought all of you were here for speaking. All right. Anyone that would like to address the mayor and council regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and seek action by the council.
Mr. Phil, pre ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five.
So a motion by council member Green, a second by vice, by council member Merrick. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, let the record reflect the voting answers. Thank you. Up next are our items for approval, agenda items four. This is an opportunity for each one of those are actions for the public to address the mayor and council. We'll begin with motion four A. That's motion twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one, and that's town hall renovations and bidding. And it has myself and then our architect Danielle Haley. So Danielle, if you want to come forward and kick us off, greatly appreciated.
Good evening, Mayor Zach, council members. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for joining.
I am Danielle Haley, Haley Architecture. Just here relating to present the status of the town hall renovation project. We are just about seventy-five percent complete construction documents, about ready to wrap everything up and get it out to bid. So I'm here just to, I guess, go over the scope of the project, sort of the plan, schedule, tentative schedule, and answer any questions, if there is anything to add or anything.
Yeah, so this, this started some time ago. Our building is not new by any means. We just had a group of A three years coming through and I explained that town hall has been many things before it was town hall. It has been a police department, it's been a firehouse, it's been a public library, a dance hall.
A dance hall.
A dance studio. Aren't they the same thing?
No.
In my brain, it was a place where you could dance, and you can still dance, it's not that. And, and then also the town hall. So the challenge is that, I know the public does not always get the chance to take a stroll through town hall, but for those of us that work here every day and those of us that visit from time to time, we have folks that are working in closets. We have a third of the building that is unusable, it's not even conditioned. It's really not even suitable for storage. We have an elevator that I encourage any of you that are here tonight, we have, I would say our electric utility director here to help save you if it gets stuck, but we don't. We do know where the master switch is, but anybody that would like to take a ride may, make sure you have five minutes to get down. And so the, the general sense is we want to improve the operational capabilities of town hall to serve the people of Berlin. We want to make it more accessible. We want the, the public to be able to enter during times of public meetings. We want to allow staff to be able to work day to day. And that we want to make sure it's A D A compliant for folks to be able to access the services that we provide in the public meetings as needed. With that, I will also say that we have a, one of the layouts and shows some of the room assignments over there on the easel. We ask that nobody take pictures because it does have some descriptors on there that we would like to make sure that they don't end up in the public realm via the internet for safety purposes, but they are accessible here. Tonight, they're always accessible downstairs in customer service if you're interested. And then there's kind of a redacted form of the layout here on pages two and six of the packet. So just know that they exist. So Danielle, thank you. We appreciate you being here and all the work that you've done so far. And to all of our staff that have chimed in and helped assist in the design and development of the plans that we have in front of us. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I'm just gonna be really brief and add a little bit to what Mayor Zach was saying. You know, this is a aging building. There's a lot of energy efficiency upgrades that are gonna go into this new project. Existing geothermal system is pretty much obsolete. I think seven out of eight H V A C units are just not functioning or not, not functioning properly. Existing fire alarm is not connected to anything when there is a fire.
Far from.
Hope that Laura's walking by and hears it. So we're gonna address a lot of these code issues, A D A compliance, the elevator certainly, efficiency, we're gonna add automatic fire sprinklers to the building and do some remediation of asbestos and lead, updating security to Mayor Zach's point, so the staff has sort of separated areas that when there are public events going on, there's not a security issue. And the same goes for, and certainly can utilize parts of the building right now that are just not, that are underutilized. There is, we are fitting a lot into this building, into the walls of this, this facility. So I think it'll be more efficient for streamlining customer service for planning and zoning and the rest of town halls. I think that'll help with the efficiencies of the staff. And then we are planning to renovate the existing planning and zoning building, which I've been in the, all the plans that annex, just so that it's, you know, can remain flexible, I guess. As of right now, the plan is economic development, but that's to be determined. So same thing over there, we'll update the H V A C lighting, all L E D lighting, asbestos and ladder mediation, network side, security and fire alarm upgrades.
Can we pause there just for a second? Because the annex was something in our bid documents, and we still keep it, I think it's built out that way even with what'll come in front of us, as an ad alternate, right? And the reason we did that is because of the cost, right? It's really speculative with an old building like this. I mean, not so long ago, we had the back wall literally falling in and, and mold and stuff like that. So we know that there are things that we will likely uncover. Sarah was just at a meeting with Tim regarding M E A grants. So we may be able to still achieve the goals of fully doing town hall and the annex building, which is currently planning and zoning. Thanks to some M E A funding, Maryland Energy Administration funding, it could help with our seven of eight HVAC systems that are not, not working or underperforming and not meeting the needs, as well as the improvements of energy efficiency that we're looking to do with this space. Anything you want to add, either of you, about that?
I mean, on the energy efficiency, the idea also will be not only comfort for the staff and occupants of the building, but reduced utility bills. So operating costs ring, operating costs down, add to the efficiencies. But yes, I think we've, we've been talking together and Sarah may be able to add to this.
I just want to add that Tim is still exploring the square footage on the roof for solar panels.
So yeah, we're trying to find every grant source that we can and revenue stream that's possible to assist with this project. Thank you, Danielle.
And as a part of that, I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit. We are planning some proposed improvements to the front facade, which I call the front facade on William Street. And this is really as a result of reconfiguration of spaces. We are gonna move the front doors to an existing, that double window location and put a window where the existing door is, update the signage, and potentially add this decorative cordless work that actually was historically on the building and was removed, I'm sure, as a result of a maintenance issue and probably costs at the time. This is all pending historic permission review, which is December third. And that is also gonna be bid as an alternate. So there is a few other, in addition to annex building, we've identified a few other easy ad alternates so that if we get into a situation where the bids exceed our budgeted amount, we have easy areas that we can cut back without hopefully compromising the project too much. I hope as we do it all, we do it all in one fell swoop, but we have to kind of try to mitigate that. I did, I am happy to report, I got three contractors to look at this very quickly, very last minute, and I asked them to give me what I call a gut check, it's a very official architectural term. Gut check of the, the budget. And all three of them came in around the same price and within, around our budget of what we have. So I, I feel confident in going to this out to bid with more information, with more time.
Were they on the lower end of the budget than we have?
Of course not.
Not in our current economy. But when you combine Danielle's litmus test with Sarah and Tim's potential M E A assistance, I think it makes it achievable.
Yes, I agree. And yes, and no disrespect, council member Oris, that's just unfortunately, everything that gets bid these days is never.
Sometimes I just have, I just have to ask the question.
I hope, right?
But I hope we are within, you know, striking distance, so.
There, in addition to like the double door, the doors here in the front, we have a window that's like a faux window. We also have another toward the rear.
Right.
Downstairs, a door that will become a window. So there is some exterior work that will have to take place. And the goal is to restore the building, right? Like, we're not trying to make it something it's not, but the, the molding work, for the most part up at the top, that existed at one time, right? And the same request that we put on the private folks of restoring historic buildings, we're trying to hold ourselves to that standard as well.
Right. And one of the things is restoring symmetry is important in the historic district is the rhythm and symmetry and of the buildings. I think it'll be nice to, to get back that sort of symmetrical view of the front town hall.
A question for you. Do you like the flags on top too?
Yes, and I, I apologize, because this is an A I rendering, which is a very cool tool, but sometimes it's a little challenging. There are two more flag poles that are on there, but they don't have the flags in them. But there are four flag poles on the building that will remain or be reinstalled in the same location, yeah.
So the entranceway here, currently there's an entranceway there that's not really open.
Right.
Correct. So will this lead to a stairwell?
It does, but it'll be access controlled, so it'll, it'll lead to a lobby, similar to like in Town Ocean City Code, it's not as large as that, but the lobby, so you'll be able to get into the lobby and see the information, all of that, that there will be access controlled doors that can be card, card reader enabled and probably controlled by customers, so they need to quote unquote buzz somebody in for a meeting, there's conference rooms up close to that front door now, they'll have the ability to do that. But nobody will be able to walk right off the street and go into anybody's office without.
If you're looking at page two, you'll see where those double doors are.
Yes.
So the goal is, you used to be able to, some of you may remember this, but you used to be able to come in and enter from the front for public meetings. Now we only have one way in and one way out. This is designed to help improve the flow as well as a secondary egress.
I have a question then, kind of, I'm sorry, to, to kind of, well, first of all, I'm glad you mentioned the H D C approval, and that's, that's, that's important, I'll take. But I, and this is a flow question, what is the rationale? I understand the need for two exits and entrances, of course, but we have the, on page two, I'm sorry. We have this new customer service entrance, which is now near the new elevator. And then we have this new main entrance. So I'm noticing though that, so the new customer service entrance obviously goes right to customer service. But I guess what I'm asking is, in, in terms of security, you know, secure, why would we have, wouldn't we want to have the in and out in one door?
So I can answer that. So the nine to five opening is gonna be where it says new customer service. And the reason that that's there is that we want to be able to have access for staff and for the public to utilize the elevator. And if we were to move that elevator somewhere else, it would be very costly. So the new customer service entrance will be there, and that will lead, that will be your primary entry point.
So this new entrance, so this new entrance will not be open nine to five?
Nope, not open nine to five.
Eight to four.
Eight to four. Yeah, there you go. Eight to four, thank you. Not open eight to four.
So then I guess I'm, the other question I'm asking is, at some point, like you said, you could buzz people in through that door. Should the customer service representative area be turned, I'm just, as a suggestion, I'm not the architect, but should it be turned to ninety degrees so that the customer service can come that way in this way?
No, you might be able to see the.
Yeah, you will have a visual connection to the front, but there will be those like card access camera. I think we'll have like a doorbell camera at the two entrances. So if somebody comes up there and presses the intercom, customer service will be able to see and, and buzz them in if it's for a meeting or something like that. I think what we envision is that door may be used more for if you are, if staff is planning a meeting with somebody, they can come to that door, they can let them in and meet them at that door.
I'd walk there and escort them out.
Correct, yes, yeah. But the customer service is just like customer service now, where you're coming to pay bills and access from the parking lot, things like that. But after hours of thoughts, I think what Mayor Zach was getting at is like for a meeting like tonight, you could come in off of William Street and come straight up the stairs, and that door would be open as well as the back door.
And the front facade, you proposed redo. I guess I'm just, I'm asking, are the bricks on that side of the building, how are the bricks on that side of the building? They're, they're.
They're, they're in good shape. The brick was repainted, I think, not too long ago.
Yeah, there, when they did that wall repair, they also repaired several bricks on the exterior of the building.
So the plan is on that left window, right now that's the door. So they'll just put a window that matches the other window in there and infill the brick below it. But other than that, there is really no brick.
And the window over on the left side, where the conference room downstairs is, stairs, that'll be a new.
Yep.
They don't look this pristine, but they're structurally in good shape.
The information testing rule, is that kind of redundant if we have a visitor center?
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind, staff are likely gonna be centrally located. We have a visitor center, but economic development will, it used to be in planning and zoning, and the goal is to move them back to planning and zoning.
It will also be twenty-four hours.
You're talking about twenty-four hours.
But is that, is that even safe? Well, you're having access to.
Well, they have it now.
Yeah, we have that over there.
With just pamphlets and stuff.
And this is like, we've received a lot of people that come to the bathrooms and stuff, then wanting information, so it's a central point.
And what is the logic behind moving the visitor centers where it is now, which is very successful for six years, and it's easy to find to have a off street?
Then it's more staff than the actual visitor center itself. It's easier when we have staff centrally located. If we have somebody that's coming for a, a new business and needs permits as well as economic development, we're like a ping pong ball, we're sending them everywhere. Whereas here, the goal and the design is to hopefully be able to make it easier for folks. You can get planning there, you can get economic development, you can get finance if needed. Everything's here and available for the, the customer.
So this, this is, sir, will be in addition to the current visitor center or that we move here?
The goal is to move staff here, as far as the economic and development staff, as well as the plans for the annex have a component for volunteers and a forward facing visitor center. It's not as big as that one, but it's still the, is the visitor center.
I thought we stuck a pin in the visitor center.
We did, we did. We stuck a pin in what we're doing with the building. The goal, at least at the mayor's office level and staff, town administrators level, is to move staff centrally located for management and ease of servicing the residents and the customers. So that part has remained the same the whole time.
So if I understand this conversation here, you're referring to the visitor center
Building.
Building remaining there, but the visitor center part of it coming over to planning?
Well, yes, the staff coming over here, and the intention is to bring the visitor center as well, with the understanding that we still have not decided what the total bill out over there, if it were to be repurposed, would look like, and or what the pathway for that building would be.
But so Ms. Haley said earlier that it was trying to be annexed because there wasn't a clear plan?
Well, there is not a clear plan by the council as to what to do with that building, but there is a plan, a clear plan from the administrative level about management of staff and access to service.
So if the council decides to keep the visitor center on main, you're gonna keep staff out of it?
The goal would be to have staff located at town hall.
Right, but if the council says that the visitor center, as it is now, should stay where it is now?
We could have that discussion, but I would encourage that there's more substance to urge to move folks over here than I'm happy to have outside of a public meeting.
And I think part of why it's easier to break off the, calling it the annex, to break it off as a separate project, knowing that the visitor center is there and can stay there and that staff can remain if, if budget does not allow for us to renovate the annex at this time. So it's kind of a clear breaking point for the project.
Even if we don't renovate that building, the current planning building, planning will move into this building when this renovation is done. So calling it the planning department right now makes sense, but it's not communicating that in the long run, it won't be planning. So, calling it the planning department right now makes sense, but it's not communicating that in the long run, it won't be the planning department, regardless of whatever else happens.
And keep in mind, we're designing, the goal as we've worked through this has been to design Town Hall not just for the current needs, but looking, I always say fifty years out, right? Because we're not gonna be hopefully remodeling this building again for a long time. That it provides some flexibility in the future if there's a change in perspective, need or anything like that, staffing. The space is being designed to be somewhat fluid. However, grouping like departments close to one another is to help ease the workflow.
I'm just, I'm not, I don't wanna say happy, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with having welcome center on the actual drawing statement. That's what it's gonna be and asking us to approve that.
Keep in mind that the reason it says that is through the planning process with staff, we had to also assign spaces so that we can make sure that we're hitting everything we need. So, it's there from.
So, why can't we just label that the economic?
You can label it whatever you want. But for our purposes of like understanding like where we need staff and how many offices we need, it needs to be labeled to have staff in it.
We can take welcome center off there.
So, just call it lobby.
Which is label of what it is. It's gonna be economic and development.
Well, that particular, the only, the only part of that drawing that's labeled as welcome center is that front area. So, that would be changed to be lobby or whatever, because it would not be an office in that location.
And it was designed in a way that could still accommodate all of our needs along with a visitor, like a volunteer space.
No, that's fine. I think the only other thing I wanted to cover was the schedule, the proposed schedule. So, of course, today, here we are requesting approval to proceed, I guess it is approval, to proceed with advertising for bids. The plan is after the Berlin Historic Commission meeting to put this out to bid December eighth. And part of this is looking at the calendar and the multiple holidays that are gonna happen between now and January thirteenth, which is when we're hoping to start construction. This is a tentative schedule, but the plan is to advertise for bids as of right now, December eighth. Have a bid opening January fifth, hopefully get town council approval the following week. If we get the bids and they are under budget, within budget, favorable, and then give them notice to proceed right away. I did also, as part of my gut check, eight month duration was doable from the local contractors. So, I think I have this right, January to September fourteenth could potentially be the moving back.